With the arrival of our fourth preolder on today, we are at a quorum and ready to get started with our conference agenda for this evening's meeting of Passaic County Board for the Preholders. Lou, you do a roll call for us?
Preholders up there, Bass, Duffy, James, the board here, Deputy Director Lozera, Director Bartlett, here.
Anthony, will you speak?
We are going to start with our public hearing for the fiscal year 2019 Passaic County Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. We have here Deborah Hoffman, Vision Economic Development, who heads up CDVG. Deborah? The public hearing is being held in accordance with the federal regulation 24 CMR Part 91, Passaic County's Plan for Citizen Participation. Passaic County has prepared a new annual actions plan for fiscal year 2019 for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Okay, Passaic County has prepared the annual action plan for 2019 for the Passaic County Community Development Block Grant Program.
These documents are on public display between May 23rd, 2019, and June 21st, 2019, and comments in the public are welcome. The county will receive $860,233 from the U.S. Department of Housing and Development, block grant funds for the fiscal year 2019 program year that runs from September 1st, 2019 to August 31st, 2020. Activities in nine communities and two nonprofit agencies have been recommended for funding. And the objective of the CDVG program is to assist low and moderate income residents and individuals with special needs to zoom benefit in the county of Passaic and eleven communities participating in the urban county CDVG program. No more than 15% of the grant may be utilized for public service activities. Very quickly, the projects that are funded, Borough of Bloomingdale, U.N.A. Avenue ADA improvement, $75,000. Borough of Hamilton, Third Avenue U.B.C.A. project, $100,000. Borough of Hawthorne, reconstruction of ADA ramps, $55,000. Township of Littlefool, Signet Area roadway rehabilitation, Maple John Avenue, $85,000. Borough of Crescent Park, North Penn Street roadway with improvement, $48,187. Borough of Totoa, San Tarry Sewer lining project, Royal Avenue, $90,000. Township of West Milford, Municipal Complex Building One, ADA bathroom retrofit, $35,000. Borough of Woodland Park, the Woodland Park ADA compliant bathrooms, environment free public library, $60,000. And Passaic County and various county parks, ADA retrofit for bathrooms. We anticipate rival camp park in Gofford Park, $110,000. Nonprofits funded, CASA, $15,000, and home care options for the visitor shopper plus program, $15,000. May I ask, and we welcome any comments in the public.
Thank you very much, Deborah. For those of you who weren't familiar with it, the Community Development Block Grants is a federally funded program that provides low and moderate income areas as well as disabilities with some of the things that we're able to build and do for them with funds from our federal government rather than the county tax. So with that, I know we have the need to do a public comment period as part of the CDVG here. So can I have a motion to open the public comment? Do I need a motion?
Yes.
Does that mean a motion to open the public comment period on this hearing? Move by preholders of four, second.
Preholders Duffy, James, the board, Deputy Director Lozera, Director Bartlett.
So this begins the public hearing on the fiscal year 2019 CDVG action plan. This isn't the general open and public portion of the reading. This is specifically on the material that was presented. Then wish to be heard?
Seeing all my authority, I move to close the public motion.
Second. Preholders Duffy, James, the board, Deputy Director Lozera, Director Bartlett.
Thank you very much. Have a motion to stop the public comment? Have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second. Preholders Duffy, James, the board, Deputy Director Lozera, Director Bartlett.
What's next, Anthony?
All right, we're going to continue to go in order. Back in late February, I guess, this board appointed Michael Glover as Passaic County Council. We never did the public swearing in, Michael, so we thought we could announce the views of the attending and the director. You are going to perform that over the office.
Raise your right hand and put your hand on the panel. I am Michael Glover.
I am Michael Glover.
Dusadonely swear.
Dusadonely swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
As county council.
County council.
For the county of Passaic.
For the county of Passaic.
To the best of my abilities and understanding.
To the best of my abilities and understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you very much, Mr. Director. Thank you, Walter, your help and cooperation. Make it possible for me to have it. Appreciate it.
Unfortunately, the other item on my agenda, the rating of PCTI are not here yet. So maybe we can start.
They would be good ones on the weekend.
Okay, so we'll do a little stall tap. Sauce shoe or something.
Boy, can I not get it. Well, the law requires us not to start our meeting until 6:00 o'clock anyway, so. Ah, that's a great idea. Michael, when you're done, we'll review the agenda and the late starter starters. Review please the content agenda and let us know about any late starters.
The right question is about the agenda. All right. I do have, Mr. Director, I do have one late starter that I emailed the Public Works Committee earlier this afternoon. This is a resolution authorizing an award contract to United Federation Systems for the Monitoring of County Security Systems and Alarm Services for Passaic County. This was a bid. It was a re-bid, and the bid was taken on April 30th. The contract had expired on April 1st, so it's kind of incumbent upon the board to take action tonight. So with your permission, I would like to request that this be added to the agenda.
And that will be N. 33, Deborah? N. 33, yeah. Well, in light of both the fact that we all have somewhere to be soon after our preolder meeting and the fact that we've got a little bit more time now, why don't we dispense with our preolder report so we can skip during the regular meeting? I will thank you very much, Anthony. I'll start. For those of you who haven't been there yet, you absolutely have to check out the new Passaic County Arts Center, the John W. Ray House in Hawthorne. A number of us, Fielder Duffy and I think Sandy, you were there with us as well for the ribbon cutting a couple of weeks ago. The John W. Ray House is a historic house, one of the oldest in the county, located in Gofford Park in Hawthorne. And as part of our ongoing historic preservation and restoration agenda, under the supervision of Kelly Ruffell, who's our Director of Historic and Cultural Affairs, and our friends in the Parks Department, it has been beautifully refurbished. On the top floor, there's wonderful exposed beams, old enough that for those of you who know the difference, you can see that they're hewn, not sawn, from back when the Ray House was built in the late 18th century. But other than that historic element in the exterior, the interior is transformed into a remarkable art gallery, as well as office space and space for the Hawthorne Historic Society and for Passaic County artists in Passaic County to provide classes and programming and all kinds of great stuff there. The Ray House opened with two exhibits, one of portraits, one of art inspired by nature. You absolutely should check it out, and it's something I know I'll be very proud of, not just continuing our historic preservation agenda, but expanding into a real support of the art of Passaic County. Does progress? All right. Not helpful, but progress. There we go now. On that note, I'd say we step down till about 5:00 or 6:00, and we can come back here. Hopefully, our students will have joined us by then, so we can recognize our tech students and launch right before we leave the meeting.
Any minute.
All right. You could have made a preolder report, but you're saying.
Well, that was the report.
That was the report. All right, we'll be back in 10 minutes. Anthony, we're back. To finish up today's conference agenda, we are joined by Emily Pereira, a student at the Passaic County. A student at a fine school in all of Passaic County, and we're going to write to her and her classmate Emily, which is a wonderful work that they did. I know we've had a confirmation. So the Duffy report, would you be, oh, sorry, Sandy, Sandy, want you to come under the, if you don't mind, Director, to come to the podium, and we're going to discuss a little brief description, probably a little appropriation, maybe in her own words, what she and Emily did.
Hi, Walter, how's everyone today? I'm Emily Barea. So sadly, Emily couldn't be here. She has a county dinner for lacrosse, but I honestly couldn't have done it without her. Like, we joke around, I'm like, if I came on the road with someone, I think it would be you. I want to thank you guys for inviting us today, and I want to thank you for this recognition. So to start off, a little story. It all started with Ms. Walker and Ms. Nolan walking into our classroom sophomore year and saying, you guys need to get involved. It's sophomore year, you're not freshmen anymore. You know, you have to be more active. Passaic PCTI offers so many opportunities, so many clubs, so many sports. And I kind of rose my hand like, hey, I have an idea. My family in Dominican Republic, we built houses, we volunteer, we give out TVs, and I wanted to do something on my own. I wanted to kind of like follow what my family was doing. And I thought, we can do something small. I was probably going to ask for donations during Thanksgiving. And luckily, under current now, Emily looks at me and goes, that sounds like, like, cool, we should do something together. I really didn't think much of it. I thought that maybe Ms. Nolan and Ms. Walker were going to walk out and forget what I said, or maybe they were going to be like, oh, okay, that seems cool, or that seems reasonable, and not really do anything, because I feel like so many people want to help, so many people want to volunteer, so many people want to go out for positions, but they end up not moving forward and actually doing what they set their mind on. But luckily, that wasn't the case. And Ms. Nolan and Ms. Walker reached out to us and were like, so what do you guys want to do? And we were like, what do you mean, what we want to do? They're like, don't tell us. I said, I'm planning a trip to Dominican Republic. PCTI and the medical shop offers different, every single year, there's a different shop. So for sophomore year, we have dental. We said, perfect, we're related to that. So luckily, we went to the dental convention, and we received donations from Sensodyne and Colgate, over 200 toothbrushes from Colgate and over 1,000 toothpastes from Sensodyne. So what we came up with was E&amp;E, it's a little corny, but we put the double E in teeth. So that's how it started. That is how it started. And we were able to raise $800, and with that money, it paid for the expenses during the trip. I had the ability to travel and go to orphanages. I went to retirement homes. I went to places that didn't even have lights or streets. And I went down and I sat a huge group of kids, and I invited them all, and I explained them, you know, dental, how to brush your teeth, how to care for them. Because I feel like every day, we wake up and we don't really think about every single item that we use, especially a toothbrush. Not everybody has that education. So when I was sitting there and I was speaking to these kids, and they were telling me about their dreams and how they want to be a dentist and how they want to do something, I was so happy. And I came back from that trip feeling so grateful for everything that I did. And something as simple as two girls, sophomore year of high school, could help so many people. It didn't end there. And there was junior year. And we like to call this the year of like, everything was going wrong. It was like a hurricane, then there was an earthquake, something happened in Florida. And me and Emily were like, okay, it's junior year. What did you have in mind? Everything's going wrong. We need to help them do something. So luckily, with the help of Ms. Walker, Ms. Nolan, we looked for different organizations, and the one that we chose was Direct Relief. The reason we really liked this one was because 99% of their profits actually go into helping people. That was very important. The people that were donating were hardworking, middle class, my family, students my age. We wanted to make sure that their money was going somewhere that was actually helping. So we were able to raise $2,000 to Direct Relief, and they were divided into four places. It was Puerto Rico because of the hurricane, Florida as well, Mexico because of the earthquake, and Syria with the refugees. But I would like to say that the reason that we were capable of raising so much money was because of sophomore year. We took so many pictures. Every single chance I got, I took pictures. I wanted, I even FaceTimed Ms. Nolan and Ms. Walker in Dominican Republic. Barely any wifi, but I managed to get a little clips of what was happening. We didn't take pictures because we wanted to be like, oh, look, we volunteered. We wanted to take pictures to show people like, this is where your money is going. We're actually doing something as students. You know, the Passaic County Tech supported us, and we did this together. And then finally, senior year, I'm very sad, they give out, I'm not going to be here anymore, and taking over. But senior year, we decided that we wanted to include our whole shop. You know, we did this together. It wasn't just Emily and Emily, it was Nolan and Ms. Walker. All together, as a school, as a high school, we raised all this money. And I just felt like, we decided, we want them to choose, what do they want to do this year? What do they want to donate? So we went into every single one of the classes and spoke about four different organizations. Evans Village, Turning Point, there was an adoption center, and also Covenant House in Newark, which helps the people with sex trafficking, human trafficking. And we had a little competition. What do you feel like speaks to you the most? And with that, we were able to raise $2,100 that we won last year, so I'm very happy about that. And we donated to all those four places. So yeah, it's kind of a rundown of everything that happened. It's a lot. It's a mouthful. But we're so happy because it's going to continue on, and PCTI, it's still going to be going. And an utterly shock that surprised me was, in this shop of medical people, people that are studying to help others, there was nothing like this. But it just takes one person with one idea, and look how far we've become. So thank you so much.
It is three years.
So there's really not much else for me to say, except that I want to just read a little bit of this, something that you did not mention yet.
Oh, is it? Oh, yeah, that's true.
So at least I can just, I'm just going to read it off.
Yeah, I told you of everything.
I don't need to read it. So whereas Emily Duval and Alani Pereira.
Emily Barea.
Are also committed to continue in this program, long after they have left PCTI, and have selected students to take over for them. So that the message and the work of E&amp;E can continue to provide support for those in need, their message is spread throughout the Academy of Medical Arts student body, and they reunited recruited underclassmen to volunteer in creating the Sunshine Bags. Are those the dentists?
Yeah, no, 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 the Sunshine Bag, I forgot to mention. It was so much, I'm so sorry about that. It had to do with mental health, because I think we never really remember what people that are going through sex trafficking, human trafficking, feeling mental health is maybe the last thing on a person's mind. So we wanted something to remind them that they're special, that here's a message written by the students. And we got them like stress balls, coloring. And I remember emailing the person, she's like, you need coloring? I was like, yes. And I sent her like lengths of stress relief and everything like that. So that is what we did this year, because we wanted to go back on our roots from sophomore year of the little bags.
And the number of students seeking outside volunteer opportunities has increased exponentially. And whereas E&amp;E's legacy will always be the example they have set for the Academy of Medical Arts students at PCTI, and whereas E&amp;E were acknowledged and featured on Channel 7 News, Be Kind Campaign Page, as women who have done something extraordinarily kind to you to say that. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of chosen preholders of the county of Passaic, that it publicly recognizes Emily and Alani for the contributions they have made to the community and county of Passaic, and be it further proclaimed that this board extends its sincere best wishes to Emily and Alani for continued help, happiness, and success.
The last thing I just wanted to say, everybody, I could have said one last thing. I want to thank everybody. And to be completely honest, me and Emily didn't think that it would take us this far. Our mission wasn't to get this recognition. Our mission number was just, it was just to help others. And we're completely so grateful for this opportunity.
You know what, Charlie? You're so shy. Maybe you'll throw out.
The kids are all right. So we've gone through the county council's report already, as well as the content agenda. I believe that brings us to the end of our conference agenda, my right hand. Very good. Have a wonderful journey.
Thank you. Preholders Duffy, James, the board, Deputy Director Lozera, Director Bartlett.
Yes, which brings us to the regular meeting, the Board of Chosen Preholders for June 11th, 2019. Let's begin with the public meetings law announcement.
Ladies and gentlemen, notice requirement of open public meetings laws been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying time, date, location, including the end of the notice. Adoptive reorganization being followed with the county clerk, posted administration bill, mail to due newspapers and coins with the provisions of the law.
Thank you very much. Roll call.
Preholders up there, Bass, Duffy, James, the board here, Deputy Director Lozera, Director Bartlett.
Here. Please rise for indication, present, and more.
O God, who provides for thy people by thy power, rules over them with love, be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our preholders in the county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord, amen.
Please join me in pleasurable.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May standing for a moment of silence for a member of all the men and women who died while serving in the United States armed forces, as well as this week, former mayor of Hawthorne and former Passaic County Preholder Anthony Ross, and former Councilman in Green, Alan Christa. And a motion for approval in the minutes of May 28th, 2018.
Thank you. Preholders Duffy, James, the board, Deputy Director Lozera, Director Bartlett.
Congratulations. No further appropriations?
Move it. Move by Duffy. Preholders Duffy, James, the board, Deputy Director Lozera, Director Bartlett.
Yes. All right. Have a motion to suspend regular order of business.
Move it.
Second.
Preholders Duffy, James, the board, Deputy Director Lozera, Director Bartlett.
That brings us to Capitol ordinance 2019-05. Can we read the title?
Capitol ordinance of the county of Passaic, New Jersey authorizing acquisition and installation of camera surveillance systems for the use of the Passaic County GL, incorporating $1,100,000 from general capital fund balance of the county.
Have a motion to open the public hearing on Capitol ordinance 2019-05.
Move it.
Thank you.
Preholders Duffy, James, the board, Deputy Director Lozera, Director Bartlett.
As anyone present is already to be heard on Capitol ordinance 2019-05. This is not the general public comment period. This is specifically about Capitol. Seeing no one, I'd probably move to close the public portion.
Second. Preholders Duffy, James, the board, Deputy Director Lozera, Director Bartlett.
Yes, have a motion to adopt Capitol ordinance 2019-05.
Move it.
Second.
Preholders Duffy, James, the board, Deputy Director Lozera, Director Bartlett.
Yes. Have a motion to resume regular order of business.
Preholders Duffy, James, the board, Deputy Director Lozera, Director Bartlett.
Yes. Since we've already done preolder reports and there are no communications, that brings us to the oral course of our meeting. Have a motion to open the public portion of the public hearing.
Second. Preholders Duffy, James, the board, Deputy Director Lozera, Director Bartlett.
This is the part where you can talk about anything you want to for three minutes. Please introduce yourself, sign in, and you do have three minutes, and whatever you say will be part of the public record.
My name is Erica Santiago Escarpodery, and this is my first time coming to this meeting, so I'm sorry if I stumble over my words a little bit. I'm a resident of Patterson. I live by John F. Kennedy High School, and I have a freshman in high school, and she is a special needs child. She has autism. And I'm here because this afternoon, I had a meeting with the mayor to speak about revenue and recreation for special needs. I spoke to him. I spoke to him on some suggestions that I had for raising revenue for property taxes. I have provided copies for everyone here. And I would like to know what are the plans for recreation? And I would like to know, who do I have to go to or who do I have to speak to to make an appointment, to speak with someone, to speak about recreations for special needs children? Not only children on the spectrum, but children with mental and physical disabilities as well. Thank you. And I'm sorry, I am here representing the parents group, Strength to Stand Up. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, I am here to personally thank you on behalf of my associates, me and I.
President, your name?
Uh, I'm here with Tim Anderson from Foster Park, okay? My associates are from away from Patterson, Little Falls, and Passaic. On the interest of you bringing services such as activity centers, residential facilities, vocational training, and transportations for our adults with developmental disabilities who reside in Passaic County. The population has been commuting outside of the county for day services or being placed in adult medical day places or centers that are inappropriate at best. And they are fully paid by Medicaid. Uh, we had the opportunity of touring one other, like an autism specific center this last week and Medicaid pays for this, so this is not like a big investment or a lot of money that has to be raised. You have to put goodwill into doing that and political will to do that. Um, we also researched some other services which will be of little cost or no cost to the county and will greatly improve the quality of life for adults with developmental disabilities such as autism, Down syndrome, cerebral palsy, and others. Uh, one is the collaboration between non-for-profits such as the ARC and the Community College. And that is done in other counties. Um, I brought some copies of the collaboration between the ARC of Somerset and the ARC of Hunterdon County with the Community College. So that will be of little cost and big rewards for this population. And the other collaboration is something that is widely adopted in New Jersey. It's called the Project Search. It is a transition program for children with developmental disabilities from high school into adulthood. Um, usually it's done by the workforce development boards in every county. And we also brought copies of this from Bergen County. There's also contacts, emails, and phone numbers if somebody wants to take the, um, the initiative on this. As always, we are here available by phone or email to meet with you at your convenience. Today I was, I happened to be the only one that was available, uh, but the whole board can meet with you at any time. Thank you again for all your collaboration and your interest.
Freeholders Duffy, James, LaFour, Deputy Director Lizarra, Director Bartlett.
Yes. I'd just like to address the topic of recreation here in Passaic County. We have been in touch with the state and actually do have a meeting scheduled for June twenty-fourth. Talk about bringing recreational activities into the county, the developmentally disabled. Um, so we are working on it and I just want to let you know that as with anything else, sometimes it takes a little time, but, and Emma, I think I mentioned to you before that we were working on different projects. And so the part that I'm more geared toward right now is recreation. I know we have, James and Duffy, were in Bergen County this week and maybe they want to speak to that.
Um, go ahead, we should.
No, no, go ahead. No, you know the facts, you don't have to. I just, I think that we need to get in the game here and meet the needs. Here's the enormous amount of resources and I think part of the problem is they're not, people are not connected to them in a meaningful way unless somebody connects them. There's a lot more all of us could be doing. Uh, Bergen County was impressive, it was a high school connected to the high school which was just connected to that. Only a hundred percent connected to that. Uh, one of the very best nonprofits, but there's a nonprofit in there that take people to the transition out of, you know, foster home or foster care. That's enormous, but something has to, something has to give with that. So they take people and they have some behavioral problems, some of them, but the nonprofit does an incredible job. The woman who was there was doing it for over thirty years, uh, and it was just impressive. So Terry and I and Sandy were going to have a seminar, a community meeting at our human, at our human services department, and we have resources there. Uh, this begins the conversation. You know, there's, there's a lot that can be done, that's why we learned that Medicaid was paying for some of the services that are offered in Bergen County. Uh, because that's always, that's always one of the, one of the issues. Where's the money going? Um, so that was actually good to hear, that it's Medicaid that was eligible and that. It's just a remarkable, uh, uh, program running in Bergen County, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. What we do have to do, um, what was asked for, a simple room, just a room. And that's how it started, correct? One room. Um, so this is the seed that starts it. And I really appreciate the fact that when we went to Bergen County, just, just open arms, kind of full of information, willing to help us in any way at all and getting started. So we're pretty excited about it. Uh, Sandy's been looking at this from, well, for months now. Awesome. So, um, that's my background, social services is my background, uh, that's what I spent my life doing. So we're looking forward to this and I really appreciate the help we got from Bergen. Uh, this is the top of the ladder and we're going to keep climbing. Uh, and we have things that we're going to do in this county recreation part. Um, Sandy's on top, but our administrators on top, the Dallas part, our parks directors on top. And I think we are very pleased with where that goes. But, uh.
I'd just like to add that first time, it's probably twelve years we've recently filled the recreation coordinator's position here in Passaic County. So we haven't had a rec coordinator in a long time. Uh, he will be at the meeting, Freeholder, that you set up with the state, so that we can begin to do that. And as part of whatever we're gonna call it, Gulfbrook Park Phase Four, we are building a, a playground, a new playground near the recently done ball fields. Uh, that will be for handicapped individual developmentally disabled people. So, um, we're headed in the right direction and I think what Freeholder Lizarra said, um, sometimes it doesn't happen as fast as any of us like, but I think with your help and you keep coming to meetings and making sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do, uh, we're gonna get there.
I think what happens is it points out, it points out some weak spots also, especially with workforce development. Um, DBR needs to step it up. DDD is involved with people in transition. DBR and the labor side, uh, need some improvement. So we're working on all of that. Uh, that's an opportunity for somebody to become self-sufficient. Everything that could possibly be done for that individual should be done. So that's what we're all working on and I really appreciate the fact that the government gave us these updates and gave us ideas and totally appreciate it.
And I just want to say that is a glimmer of hope too. On Friday I was in Hawthorne and I don't know if you know the Springboard program in Bergen County, the house where the eighteen to twenty-year-old. Actually, the first one in Passaic County started in Hawthorne, just as, probably last year. And I went there Friday because they have a little cafe to eat. And it's very similar, similar to Springboard. That's not a county initiative, it's more of the school district. So my hope, and I spoke to the superintendent of schools and I said, why can't every high school in Passaic County have a program like this? So it's been started, hopefully it's gonna take off. And I mean, if you want to reach out to your school districts, they're the ones who would have to take the lead on that. But there is one for the first time in Passaic County and I'm hoping that's going to spread throughout the whole county to all the high schools. This is a great program.
Some good news is we have members of boards of ed who are very interested in coming to our meetings in the services, uh, they're interested in expanding their programs. I think there's some frustration because where they have kids that need help, sometimes they can't get them to help if they want to get them, and I think that's a problem. So again, it's the conversation that we all need to have. And boards of ed members are gonna be at that meeting. Um, so far I have three flipped in, I've talked with two, I've seen who's the president, board member Patterson. Patterson has ten thousand kids that are, that are classified. Ten thousand, they don't have autism, but ten thousand individuals that are classified. That's astonishing. So that's just one city. Yes.
I have a question, is that an open meeting to the public or just for?
It's not going to be open to the public, but if you would like to come, let me know. And only because we're limited in space, so this isn't, this isn't get ideas. We're gonna hear from people from SHIP, which has about a thousand kids in Bergen County that they work with. Uh, there's a nonprofit that works out of the place that we went to, uh, the other day. She's coming, so we have some people coming that need to be heard. And I want to, I initially was gonna be for boards of ed people because they have problems with kids in the school. This is young, it's when you transition out, we have kids in foster homes where they transition out. Um, this is the start of the conversation, so it's not gonna be six thousand people with funny ideas. The more people you have in the first week, the less you're gonna get done. Right, so we're gonna have the professionals there, the people who know what they're doing, who have done this for years, we're gonna listen to them and get some ideas. So like, this is the beginning, it's not gonna be the end. That make sense?
And I just want to close it out by saying, Emma, thank you for being here again. Uh, Erica, thank you for making the time and movement to come out and talk with us as well. I suspect it's not the last time we'll see you here. As you can hear, you've got folks up here, uh, who are working hard on these issues. Nothing happens as quickly as we'd like, but I recall you had a question about, uh, information that could be made available to people that are part of Strength to Stand Up and the other parents organizations out there. Uh, the county does host various programs, particularly in April for Autism Awareness Month. Uh, those are videotaped and you can find them on our YouTube channel. Two years ago, we did a program on, it was sort of a, uh, soup to nuts view of the various services that are available from BBRS, from the sheriff's office, from the various county offices. This year we did one on estate guardianship and financial planning for families with adult children or near adult children on the spectrum. Uh, so those resources are also things we're trying to push out there. I would encourage you to share, uh, with folks as well from Passaic County's YouTube channel on the internet. So again, thanks very much for coming. That brings us to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to add N thirty-three?
Move it.
Second. Freeholders Duffy, James, LaFour, Deputy Director Lizarra, Director Bartlett.
Yes. Can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda, N one through N thirty-three?
Thank you. Freeholders Duffy, James, LaFour, Deputy Director Lizarra, Director Bartlett.
Yes, new business guarantee ordinance two thousand nineteen dash oh six.
Do you need to read the title? Yes, and Director, we are receiving the supplemental debt statement, uh, from CFO. And, and the ordinance authorizing a guarantee by the County of Passaic, state of New Jersey, of lease purchase obligation of the Passaic County Department Authority in aggregate principal amount not to exceed twelve million one hundred and twenty-six thousand and consenting to the such financing and determining certain other matters in connection therewith.
Very good. Can I have a motion to approve guarantee ordinance two thousand nineteen dash oh six on number three?
Thank you. Freeholders Duffy, James, LaFour, Deputy Director Lizarra, Director Bartlett.
Yes, can I have a motion for personnel? Move it.
Thank you. Freeholders Duffy, James, LaFour, Deputy Director Lizarra, Director Bartlett.
Yes, bills.
Thank you. Freeholders Duffy, James, LaFour, Deputy Director Lizarra, Director Bartlett.
Very good. Yes, any thing else from our deputy county administrator who just showed up, am I right? All right, very good. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
Second.
Freeholders Duffy, James, LaFour, Deputy Director Lizarra, Director Bartlett.
Yes, thank you all very much, I'm ready.